Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Gary Jones is here from the East Side Church of Christ. I'll ask him to lead us in the invocation and I'll ask Councilman Stonecipher to follow that up with the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
First of all, giving honor to God who's ahead of my life, acknowledging the council members, Mayor Cornet, we appreciate the privilege of being able to be in this meeting this morning. Let's bow our heads. Father God in heaven, we thank you so much for your grace and mercy. Father, we thank you for allowing us to wake up to see the light of another day. Father, I pray for your divine will as we convene today for the purpose of the business of the state and the city of Oklahoma, God, that everything would be done according to your will. That our hearts would be humbled, God, knowing that you are using everyone in this council as a servant to the people, Father. I pray heavenly Father, as this meeting go along, Father, sometimes there are times in our lives when we don't always agree and I pray that we can learn to agree to disagree. And still, at the end of the day, Father, have love one for another. Father bless every council member individually as well as collectively, Father, that they would carry on the work of the city here in Oklahoma City. Father, I ask that you would give them all longevity of life and bless their families as they labor together with them in this effort. And Father, as we go through life, we pray that this city would always be a beacon to the world, Father, that everything that is done in this council will be done for the people. And Father, I pray if it's your divine will, as we come to the close of our day from this meeting, that we would be able to see that something has been accomplished and our lives have been changed, that hearts have been enlightened. And Father, I pray if it's your divine will, that we would be always mindful of the fact that it is you that have made us and not we ourselves. Continue to bless this council and bless this city, bless this state, and most of all, God, bless us as a people, that we can represent you and glorify you. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every month, we recognize one of our city employees as the employee of the month and with over 4,000 employees, you can imagine how difficult that is to do and what a large honor it is. So with that, I'll ask Chantel to come forward. Chantel Craig works in Public Works. Just a few short steps around the corner from here. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Chantel Craig has been a city employee for two years and is a clerical aide three in the Stormwater Quality Division of the Public Works Department. Chantel handles receipts, analytical reports from contracted laboratory service providers, and all chain of custody files for the division. Whereas Chantel also maintains Action Center reports pertaining to the division, training records, and all safety-related inspections. Whereas Chantel has done a remarkable job of organizing important data files pertaining to permit requirements, ensuring that the city stays within regulations. Whereas Chantel is a vital part of the environmental team and has made the team stronger and more efficient. Whereas her professionalism, intelligence, and willingness to help make her an outstanding employee. Whereas Chantel Craig is always in a good mood and pleasant to work with, making her an asset for her division and the city. Whereas this council desires to recognize Chantel Craig for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Chantel Craig, August 2017, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, we need a resolution to make this official. Is there a motion from the council? And cast your votes. And how about that? It's unanimous. What a shot. Please take our best wishes back to the Public Works and tell everybody over there, we said alone, we appreciate their work. All right, let's show a round of appreciation once again for employee of the month. All right, we're on item three of the council agenda. It's like we have a series of appointments. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for July 18th and 4B is to approve the journal for July 5th. Is there a motion here?
Move the items.
All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item five is a request for uncontested continuances.
Yes, Mayor, today we have item 9A4, which is a zoning item. We also have item 9E1D 507 Northwest 24th Street. It is requested to be stricken. Item 9E1E 2000 Northwest 36th Street, request to be stricken. Item 9E1F 700 Southeast 47th Street, request to be stricken. And item 9F1 501A 507 Northwest 24th Street, request to be stricken.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Let's move on to revocable permits. The first is a request with the Down Syndrome Association of Central Oklahoma to hold the Down Syndrome Festival and 5K. And Jill Harrison is here. Jill?
Good morning. My name is Jill Harrison. I'm the executive director of the Down Syndrome Association. And on September 23rd, we are having our biggest fundraiser. It's called the Down Syndrome Festival and 5K. And we will hold a 5K starting at 8:00 in the morning. We'll be closing in front of the ballpark between Mickey Mantle, on Mickey Mantle, between Sheridan and Reno from 6:30 to 10:30. We have notified all of the abutting properties and have signatures and everything is notarized and we're expecting about 6,000 people at our event.
My goodness.
So it's very large and we usually raise around $165,000.
Do you have room for others or are you still taking?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so what should people do if they want to sign up?
The website is dsfestivaland5k.com.
All right, is there a motion? Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Jill, thanks for all your work. All right, our next request for a right-of-way use permit is from Revolve Productions and they'd like to hold the AMP Festival. Are you Toby?
Yes, I am.
Nice to meet you.
You as well.
Yeah, and tell us about your, is this the AMP Festival or?
AMP, it stands for Art Music Power. It's an all-female art and music festival. It's its second year on 9th Street. We are petitioning to close the street, actually, it's the alley that is just east of Broadway, all the way to Oklahoma Avenue from 6:30 in the morning till 11:00 at night. The event runs from 12 to 8:00 p.m. It's doubled in size from last year, so we need the additional space. Last year, we closed it at the tracks before Oklahoma Avenue. We've got all the signatures from the businesses on the street and all the, everything's been notarized and in place.
All right, what will people do at the AMP Festival?
We have 14 live music performances by either all-female bands or female-fronted bands of all genres, and we have over 60 tents for artists and artisans that are all females, selling their wares and their art.
All right, it's in Ward 6, Meg.
It was a really big success last year.
It was. We expected 1,500 last year and had over 3,000 turnout, so we expect it to be even bigger this year.
Wonderful. Move approval here.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Toby.
Item 6C is a request with the Western Avenue Association to hold West Fest. Kent Steven Myers here? Yeah. Okay, sure. Rachel, we'll need your name and address for the record.
It's Rachel Taylor. It's 510 West Hill Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. So West Fest is actually in its third year this year, so we are excited to have year three kick off with our traditional big outdoor stage. And then we also are, for the first time, using the Will Rogers indoor stage as well. And then we will have, for the first time, also a local vendor market, so we'll have lots of shopping to do right there on the street as well as with the businesses that are already located within Western Avenue. So the goal of this festival is to promote the area of Western Avenue and the visitation to Western Avenue and also increase sales with our, with our, our local restaurants and retail shops.
All right, and again, that's August 19th?
August 19th from noon until 10:00 p.m.
And how can people get more information?
Our website is westfestok.com.
All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All right, comments or questions on the PPA?
Mayor, just a big thank you to the staff for working on the upgrade of the sound system at the Civic Center to include the hearing loop for assisted listening. It's going to make a huge difference and we're hoping that the Civic Center may just be sort of a role model for other things around the city.
How long do you think it'll be before these are implemented?
I don't know the answer to that question, but...
Okay, well, just wondering.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, we have a motion in a second. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the EAT. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Jim Hopper. Jim? Jim has indicated he wanted to speak to item 7AX.
Are we on the agreement with the short-term rental Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't realize we were going to get to that this quickly. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this morning. My name is Jim Hopper. I'm the president and CEO of the Oklahoma Hotel and Lodging Association, so we represent hotels and lodging properties throughout the state of Oklahoma. This issue of agreements with short-term rental companies, particularly Airbnb with cities, is a good start. And I'm going to assume, assumptions are always dangerous, but I'm going to assume that this will pass today and it probably should because cities need revenue and we all know that. Oklahoma City and Tulsa, I have a meeting tomorrow in Tulsa on this very same issue. This needs to happen, probably, and it probably will pass and we understand that. But I would urge this council to go beyond this as you move forward on this issue. According to CBRE, the National Commercial Real Estate Company, they did a study on this issue. Airbnb and other short-term rental platforms, they like to talk about the allure of the home-sharing industry. Eighty-one percent of the revenue in 2016 that Airbnb generated came from people that own multiple homes that don't live in those homes or own entire apartment complexes. And what's happening around the country is that they are purchasing these properties and they are immediately putting them on the platform to rent them out and they are actually running illegal hotels. This is a, Oklahoma's a true property rights state. We all agree with that. If I wanted to be able to share my, rent out a room in my home, I ought to be able to do that. But property rights go both ways. And one of the issues is that my rights as a homeowner that is next door to someone who rents out their home every weekend for a party house, and I will tell you that if you go on some of these sites, you will actually see homes rented, even in Oklahoma City, that says this is a party house, come for the weekend, have your bridal party there, have your groom's party there. I spoke about 10 days ago with a citizen here in Oklahoma City who said, "I live right behind one of these houses that's listed on Airbnb and every single weekend, there's parties." I've had to call the police on them because they're playing music loud, they're doing all kinds of things that, myself as a property owner, I have property rights also. So my point is that this is a good start. It's great to collect taxes. As you know, Airbnb recently made an agreement with the state of Oklahoma to collect sales taxes, state and local sales taxes. That's great, but you need to address it further. I have shared information with officials here at the city. I've done it in Tulsa, we've done it in Norman, saying, "Here are some other things that you need to address in terms of zoning, in terms of property rights, in terms of health." These properties are not inspected by the Health Department like hotels are. They don't pay ad ver lorum taxes in off, as much as, as, as other people, as hotels do. They don't meet the same standards that, but yet they're operating as, as hotels and it needs to be a level playing field. And so I would just urge, and I've got, we've got a lot of information that we can share with the council and with the, the officials here to talk about some further steps that need to be taken to make it a true partnership and a true home-sharing economy because that's not what's happening right now. The, the, there are numerous, numerous stories all over the country of people showing up to check into their, their beautiful home that they've rented for the weekend and the people that were there before are just walking out. The sheets haven't been changed, the kitchen's dirty, all these kind of things are just, it's a horror story and they're not regulated. The last thing I will share with you is, in Florida, in Texas, in Tennessee, and other places, and other states around the country, this year during this legislative session, it didn't happen in Oklahoma, but we were very vigilant on this, the short-term rental companies went to state legislatures and, and tried to pass legislation to preempt cities from regulating the home-sharing business. So on the one hand, they are making agreements, these voluntary agreements for the collection of taxes, which is great, but they're also going out to the state legislatures and trying to preempt cities from regulating the, the short-term rental, the home-sharing business. We will not let that happen. We will be very vigilant out at the state Capitol to make sure that that does not happen in Oklahoma, but I wanted you all to know that they are doing that and they're trying to take away your ability to regulate these homes as you should. So thank you very much for allowing me to be here. We'd be glad to share a tremendous amount of information and actual, actual ordinances that you could look at to pass to, to, to regulate these and get a better handle on it and actually collect more revenue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Bob Ponkel is here. Bob, do you want to give us a presentation from the city's perspective on this action today on Airbnb?
Yes, sir. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation, so we'll give the screen just a second to come down. Good morning, Mayor, Council. I've been asked to provide you just a general overview of the Airbnb agreement that's before you today. I have also with me today Matt Boggs. Matt's an assistant treasurer in my office and he's been assisting me with the, finalizing the agreement with Airbnb. We're going to cover a few topics for you today, very brief. We'll talk about some of the background on Airbnb and then we'll cover some of the key terms within the agreement that we think might be of interest to you. And then we'll talk briefly just about the timeline, you know, at which point might we be collecting taxes through Airbnb. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and he's going to cover the background for us.
Okay, so first a little background about Airbnb, just we're all on the same page. Airbnb Incorporated was founded in 2008, so still a relatively young company. And the way that it's set up, they have an online platform, so whether that be through Airbnb.com or through their online application, essentially hosts, as, as they define it on the property, can go and list their rooms for a short term to guests. And so these guests will come on and they can find any number of rooms. That has grown significantly over the last number of years. Worldwide, there are up to 3 million properties listed on Airbnb. Now, in Oklahoma City, we've been monitoring this over the last few years and we've seen it grow from less than 100 to over 100, tipping around 200. And so it's something that we've seen growth here in Oklahoma City as well. There was a press release back in February where Airbnb stated that in 2016, some 11,000 guests stayed at Airbnb properties in Oklahoma City during calendar year 2016. Now, just, just we're on the same page. This is specifically for the 5.5% hotel occupancy tax. So this is not, the, the funds here would not go to the general fund. This is just like any hotel tax funds would go, which would be for the Convention Visitors' Bureau, for the fairgrounds to pay for those bonds, and for marketing essentially for event sponsorships and those with tourism in Oklahoma City. As Mr. Hopper indicated, in June of 2017, Airbnb did reach an agreement with the Oklahoma Tax Commission for the sales tax portion of those. So, starting on July 1st, any Airbnb property in the state of Oklahoma was taxed the appropriate sales tax, which for Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County, would be the 8.375%. We should see that in our September check, just due to the natural lag in that, so we should start seeing the sales tax from Airbnb starting in September. Now for, Bob's going to cover some of the specifics with this voluntary collection agreement.
Thank you, Matt. Now, one thing I did want to stress, you know, with the discussion that we have going on today, that the purpose of this agreement is to address Airbnb's assumption of responsibility as it relates to the city's hotel tax ordinance. So we're talking about collecting taxes. There are other ordinance that are, you know, reside within the city, but it's not intended to address other city ordinances for which an individual host might be responsible. Now, to accommodate their role, Airbnb will register and assume the role of an operator on behalf of its host here in Oklahoma City. The collection of information on guests, the payment of room rental, and the calculation of taxes will all take place on Airbnb's web-based platform. They agreed to collect the taxes at the time of the rental and remit the taxes to the city on a monthly basis along with the monthly tax report. This actually may reduce the city's administrative burden of collecting reports and taxes from each individual host within a city. As with any operator, the city can audit Airbnb every three years, which is about the normal time for us to, you know, make cycle and come around and audit a hotel. In the event that there are discrepancies that we find that we, that can't be resolved by Airbnb, the city can contact the host directly to seek resolutions. We can also contact hosts that have been brought to our attention either by complaint or other direct notifications to us. And as with most contracts, both parties have the right to terminate the agreement with written notice to the other party. So those are just the, the general terms of the agreement, so going on to the, the timeline of when we might start collecting taxes. If the agreement is approved today to allow Airbnb to start collecting our taxes, then as Matt had said, Airbnb will need a certain amount of time in order to incorporate our transaction detail into their platform. They've told us it'll be about four weeks that they can do this. And so within the agreement, we have an effective date of September 1st, and that will actually be the first day that they'll start collecting Oklahoma City hotel taxes. What that means, and I think Matt touched on this, is that we should start seeing the results of those revenues when they file their September taxes in October, usually around the 15th of the month. So with that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, any questions for Bob on Airbnb?
Do we have any estimates in terms of revenue dollars?
At this point in time, and this is probably a good thing in regard to doing an agreement with Airbnb right now, the numbers aren't real significant. I mean, we are talking about, Matt had mentioned, based on Airbnb's estimates, that, you know, we're looking at maybe 11,000 hosts or guests stayed in Oklahoma City last year. Just by our calculations, we say, we estimate that to be around 20-something thousand in taxes that would have come to the city. But, again, it's a good point in time to start entering into this type of agreement just because of the growth that we've seen over the last few years.
All right, thanks, Bob.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the consent docket? Are we ready to vote?
I have an item N.
Okay.
And on this, this issue, I've asked Kenny or Dan to kind of introduce it for me so that, so we can use the right terms. I probably won't, won't use the right ones, so.
N.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dan can answer any questions if I get anything wrong, but the, this is a acceptance of a subdivision bond in lieu of having the improvements done prior to acceptance of the dedication. So you'd be accepting the, the bond and the dedications and then the developer would be installing the, the improvements and the improvements are street improvements and drainage improvements. If you look at the map, I guess you guys may not have that, but there is a link between the commercial and the office properties, the five tracks that this relates to into the residential neighborhood. And that, that link is, there's the map, comes from track five on the, these properties into the residential streets. Track five is basically at the bottom of the map and I believe, and it would link into the residential streets. So Councilman Greiner would like to not accept the dedications for the subdivision bond.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that is because this property was zoned in a PUD in 1984 and it allowed for a connection to the, to the residential neighborhood. I, I think that was a horrible decision that was made in 1984, but, you know, none of us were here then and nothing was even at this, in this area. And so, and the reason that the developer wants that connection is so they can make a left turn to go west on Route 66. The better solution would be to use their, their connection that's going north there and make a cut through the median on Highway 66 to turn left on that, but the developer doesn't want to deal with ODOT, which I don't blame him, but it still is a better, it's still a better solution. And so the, the neighbors are obviously, I mean, it's, it's a really, really awkward connection over there on the west side. I've, I've driven by it and it, it looks really, really odd. I don't think it's a good thing for the residential neighborhood and obviously, they don't think so either. So I don't really want to have any sort of connection to, to this, so if, basically, there's no legal thing, there's no legal way that we can stop the developer from doing that because... because of the PUD says that they can have, that the PUD actually says they can have two connections to the residential neighborhood. But I just feel like this is a way that I can show support for the residential neighborhood, that I agree with them, and leave it private. And ultimately, I would hope that it would cause the developer to see that the better idea would be to connect it on that, on their northbound street, to make a, be able to make a left turn lane. So, that's a...
And the effect of not accepting this is that the improvements within the, that track that's shown on the map will remain private improvements. They will not be public, public street improvements, or public, or public drive, or public drainage improvements. They would remain private.
So what does that mean? The developer remains responsible for those properties?
Developer or the subsequent owners of the property.
And, and are there legal consequences with this? Could we see a district court action for not accepting, declining to accept?
Now, Councilman, this is something that the council has absolute discretion over, whether or not to accept dedications, or they, because we have to accept the maintenance of those. They can't force us in any way to come in and accept those dedications. It's totally within the purview of the council whether they want to do that or not.
And what you're telling me, James, is that the neighbors are adamantly opposed to this?
Yeah. And, and pretty much, the city doesn't have any leverage to take away that, and this is about, this is kind of the last ditch.
Is the developer here to speak?
Do what?
Is the developer here to speak?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is anyone here on behalf of the developer?
Even if we, even if we deny it, we can always bring this back and accept it later on, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like this is an absolute final decision. But anyway, so with that, I would...
Yeah, you'd like, you'd like that item pulled and have it voted on separately? Okay.
Mayor, I had two quick comments, if I could, just very briefly. I just wanted to mention item 7Q, which is the agreement with the artist, Krevanek and Bro, Art &amp; Design, for the Art for the Municipal Courts building. So I think we're really excited about that selection. And 7AQ is our annual agreement with the youth council. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Debbie Martin profusely, and to thank leadership Oklahoma City for helping us with that program. I think we're 15 years, maybe, into it. We've had so many awesome students come through, and just ironically, I was at Best Buy the other day and getting some work done on my phone, and ran into Zach Randolph, who was one of the Ward 6 youth council members. He's going to OU, he's a junior this year, he's in ROTC, and he's working part-time to help put himself through college, just an outstanding young man. So he's one example of all these great kids that we have come through youth council. And I think we get to introduce our new class next week, maybe. So we've got another 18 great young people that will get to learn about the city. Thank you to everybody involved.
Yeah. Thanks for drawing attention to that. Anybody else on the council want to pull an item for special consideration on the consent docket? We have a motion in a second. I'll consider that for everything on the consent docket except for item N. So we'll vote that, and it passes unanimously. Now, James, your motion is to deny item N. Is, is there a second?
Second. Just for clarification, Mayor, if we vote yes, then we're denying it.
It's to deny, yes. A yes vote denies the request.
Thank you.
Cast your votes, and it is denied. All right. We're on to the concurrence item.
Who goes out with subject individual considerations?
Okay. Any individual considerations on the concurrence docket? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9, there are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 8. The address is 7011 West Hefner Road, and it's an ABC issue. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing for an ABC2 application. It went before the Planning Commission on June the 8th, 2017. It was approved there, and as I understand it, there are no protests, so I'd move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning issue in Ward 4. The address is 823 Southwest 31st Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become an O1 limited office district if approved. Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is anyone here to speak against this item? Your Honor, I've met with the applicant, I've gone and visited the site. This is going to be a great project for Southwestern. With that, I'll move for approval.
All right. There's a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8, at 15125 North Council Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become an R1 single-family residential district if approved. Mark?
Again, this is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone property located at North Council Road from AA agriculture to R1 single. It went before the Planning Commission on June 8th with, and met with approval. There are no protests here that I'm aware of, and so I'd move for approval, please.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 has been deferred until August 29th. Item 9A4 deferred until August 29th. Item 9B is a sewer issue that we discussed two weeks ago, and this is a public hearing for this item. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9B today? All right. How about a motion then to move it forward?
Move it forward.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C deals with a series of parking issues, and is Jason going to give us...
Jason Fairbrush is here to give us a brief presentation. This has to do with on-street parking. There's, there are several things that are changing in the ordinance, but primarily having to do with the use of multi-space meters and on-street parking downtown.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Pleased to have the opportunity this morning to share some background information with you about the two proposed ordinance changes that are on your agenda, items 9C and items 9D. And together, these items combined, we feel like we'll really modernize and update our on-street parking provisions, as well as change the metered parking time limits and the fees for on-street metered parking. With that, we'll start with item 9C, and these are proposed changes to chapters 32, 33, 56, and 60. And I might mention that this was really a collaborative effort between the Public Transportation and Parking Department, Public Works, the Police Department, and the Office of Sustainability located in the Planning Department to come up with these changes. So we have a summary of the changes on the slide for you, and I'll just briefly go through those. What you're going to find in this proposed ordinance change is, one, some, some language to allow for electric-vehicle-only spaces. You'll find that in chapters 32 and in 33. And really, what we're doing with the ordinance change is we're allowing for the future implementation of on-street parking spaces that are designated for electric vehicles only, and then establishing fines if non-electric vehicles were to park in those spaces. In no way does the ordinance identify specific locations for electric vehicles. All that would still have to be brought to the Traffic Commission, but it does provide for that implementation in the future. The other item included in the ordinance change is the inclusion of pedicabs and other human-powered vehicles in chapter 32. And basically, what, what that change is doing is essentially accounting for pedicabs in particular, the, basically saying they need to comply with the same provisions of the ordinance that any typical motorist would have to. So, for example, they're not allowed to park in on-street parking spaces, you know, without paying some type of parking fee, not operating on sidewalks, those kinds of things. We're also clarifying the physically disabled exemption. That's chapter 32 as well. As you may know, there are provisions to allow people with a physical disability that have the appropriate placard, and the placards issued by the appropriate organization to use on-street parking and not pay a fee. And we're simply updating the language to make sure that it is specifically spelled out, that they can also, people with those type of physical disability placards can park in multi-space parking spaces as well. We're also clarifying taxi cabs' use of metered parking. Again, not doing anything in the ordinance to prevent taxi cabs from using on-street parking for the quick loading, unloading of passengers, but just making sure that even in a multi-space metered parking environment, if they're going to park there, they have to pay, just like any other motorist would. We're also adding an administrative fee for impounded vehicles, where that vehicle is involved in some type of criminal activity. The administrative fee for that impound will range from $50 to $100. You can find that in chapter 32, and then also in chapter 60. And then, the last item I wanted to touch on was allowing for additional payment methods at meters. And this is where the pay-byplate on-street parking technology really comes into play. And the reason the, the change is needed in the language is, right now, the language basically says that, you know, motorists are not allowed to park in on-street parking spaces when either the meter shows to be expired, or the receipt that is provided by the electronic meters shows the time has expired. Well, by switching over to pay-byplate technology, none of that will be necessary. So we're simply just updating the language to, excuse me, really reflect that a motorist cannot park in excess of the amount of time they've purchased. So with that, I thought I might spend just a minute talking a little bit about pay-byplate technology, and how this would work, and how, what we could expect implementing it along with the, the ordinance change. So first of all, with the on-street parking technology converting over to pay-byplate, we really think, as I mentioned, it'll modernize our system, and it'll really make on-street parking more convenient for the end user. And so, how does that happen? Well, for one, each of our current electronic parking meters will be equipped with a keyboard, similar to what you see here on the slide. And so what that allows a person to do, an on-street parking customer, basically, they can find any available on-street parking space, find a meter en route to their final, you know, pedestrian destination, and pay for their parking by simply using coins, credit card, and entering their license plate. So, again, thinking about convenience, implementing this technology, one, will prevent customers from having to locate a meter, purchase their parking, you know, get the printed receipt, go back to their car, affix it to the windshield. And then in those areas where there is currently still the manual coin-operated meters because of the credit card acceptance capabilities, no longer will people parking outside of, for example, the Project 180 zones, have to be concerned about having coins available to pay for parking. And so we think that's a really big benefit and convenience factor for people that are parking downtown. And one of the ways that we're going to be able to phase out the manual meters by implementing pay-byplate technology is we can more widely disperse our existing electronic parking meters. So what I mean by that is because a person doesn't have to find a meter, go back to their car, we really feel like we can go with a more industry standard of one electronic parking meter per block face. And so what that allows us to do, again, is take our existing inventory of meters, spread them out more in the downtown area, so that now we'll have those same electronic meter technologies in midtown, we'll have them in Bricktown and some other areas.
So Eric, I'm sorry. Jason, we currently have an ordinance that says that two vehicles cannot park in the same space. Will that be altered by this, because you've addressed so many different types and shapes and sizes of vehicles? Do we have to have, you know, set spaces, or can people fill up the space that exists and take a picture of their license plate?
Yeah. They'll, I mean, they'll still be designated parking spaces, and we, and there's nothing in these, these ordinance changes that would allow for more than one vehicle to park in a particular space.
If you had two pedicabs, they could fit into one space.
True.
Possibly two little electric cars.
Two little cars, yeah.
Could fit into one space.
Right.
And create some spaces without, you know, causing much disruption. I just advise you to maybe take a look at that. It seems, two motorcycles, you know, it seems a little bit outdated with people driving various-sized cars.
Okay. Certainly take a look at that. And then the next, the next...
One question. Any new payment options as far as credit cards? We're a little limited on the credit cards that are available.
At, at this time, no. Just same suite of credit cards and, and coins. Now, one of the, now, one of the other things we, we do plan to implement with the pay-byplate technology that's a little bit later on in our phasing, is the ability to pay for parking using a smartphone app. So at that time, there might be more credit card options that are available. But again, going back to the convenience, we think, you know, again, with the pay-byplate technology, a person could pay for an hour and a half a time, their meeting runs late, they can simply reload their parking meter from their phone. So we'll certainly look at those options at that time at the latest.
And how are we going to educate people? I mean, people are still struggling with the new machines of how to do it. So how are we going to educate people about what to do? I don't know what my license plate number is, for instance.
Right. Well, it's, it's a great question, and one of, you know, one of the things we'll encourage people to do is, you know, obviously, right, you got to have your license plate readily available. So, you know, one idea is you simply just take a picture of your license plate, keep it in your cell phone. But it's a great question, and in fact, we had a meeting last week with our PR firm, and we do understand that with these changes and a new way of paying for parking, I mean, it's our duty to educate the public. And so we met with our PR firm, we're putting together some strategies. Our marketing folks, along with the city's PIM office, will work collaboratively on that and try to get that information out to as much as we possibly can.
Jason, with regards to that, a thought I had was that you would put a larger sign, because currently, the electronic meters that we have, the face of them are pretty well all used up. You don't have any additional space. So if you could, maybe one sign per block, that would go into more detail on currently how to use the electronic meters, because I still encounter people who struggle with how to use them. And secondly, you could also put a space in there, anybody with handicap parking can park free and doesn't have to pay for that. And just, you know, a much larger sign, just block by block, to give, especially people from out of town that don't access social media and those types of other activities, just to be aware of how they can park here legally.
We'll, so I'd certainly consider that.
I got a question on enforcement. So as far as enforcement, are parking officers going to be going around typing in the license plate to see how much time they have? Or are they going to have a list of everybody, of all of the license plates, and which ones have been gone over time, and then they go out and search for that license plate? I mean, how is that, how is exactly that going to work?
Again, great, great question, and that's another advantage to the pay-byplate, is that we'll be able to actually enforce on-street parking much more efficiently, because the vehicles used by the police service techs to enforce the on-street parking will have cameras that will automatically read those plates. And so they'll be networked and know, you know, when they drive by, they read that, are they within their allotted time? So it'll be much more efficient. Okay.
Fascinating, yeah. Are you almost through, Jason?
Uh, yeah, I just, sorry. I'm sorry.
We keep interrupting, and we never let you get through your...
I can be real quick on the changes to chapter 60, the next item. And let's see. So on, on the item 9D, these are changes to chapter 60, the schedule of fees. And quickly, what we have now is we basically have eight different zones or tiers for on-street parking. We are recommending consolidating that to, one, very... We are recommending consolidating that to one very easy-to-understand, consistent, city-wide, just two-hour parking zone. And, you know, we've done that based on some feedback we've received and the difficulty sometimes in being able to take care of significant business downtown when you only have one hour to do it. You know, an hour fifteen, an hour and thirty, most people can do it, some can't get it done in one hour. So we are recommending that change. On the next slide, was going to just show you real quickly a map of our existing parking meters and zones. And again, I won't go into the detail, but suffice it to say, we have eight different zones, different pricing in each one of those zones, and we're just looking for consistency and clarity in the pricing moving forward. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Meg. So then we would wrap up with not only increasing the time limits to two hours, but we would also look at changing the on-street parking fee to a consistent $2 per hour for on-street parking. So why would we do that? Well, we really feel like, right now, the fee for on-street parking does not support its intended use, which I think most would agree, on-street parking should be convenient, some of the most convenient parking, and there's a price associated with that. In addition, we need pricing that encourages high turnover. And right now, the on-street parking is actually less expensive than parking in a municipal parking garage, many of the garages downtown. So with on-street parking being some of the cheapest parking, it really doesn't incentivize that high turnover and in some cases, we believe, can lead to excessive vehicular circulation downtown as people might feel like, okay, it's worth driving around the block two or three times to find that cheapest, most convenient parking. So again, with the ordinance changes today, we would propose increasing that to $2 per hour and customers could still purchase parking in 15-minute increments.
Okay. Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Michael, you wanted to talk about this?
Yes, I certainly do, thank you.
All right.
Yes, I do, thank you, thank you so much. Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. This proposed amendment by this gentleman, again, I walked in kind of late, but I do have some interesting points that I did take down. I think it's going to be very interesting to a lot of people. Number one, this gentleman's agenda seems to have hidden agenda attached to it. And number one, this man wants this committee to embark on a weird idea of creating a system now where when a person pays with a credit card or what have you, again, I came in late, it's necessary now for them to put in a driver's license. Are we serious here? Now, what sense does that make? Excuse me, not a driver's license, but a license tag. Now, what sense does that make of anybody's mindset to suddenly now, we want you to put up a, your driver's license tag into the whole equation? Some people may not have an opportunity or maybe a little late getting somewhere. Are we ready for this one? So why don't we consider that before? That doesn't even make sense. Everything to this point seems to have been working. As a matter of fact, I park down here daily, as all of you know, and I haven't had a problem meeting my deadlines or getting a ticket. And as a matter of fact, if a person does get a ticket, that should be on themselves to know whether their time is limited or not because you do have parking enforcement officers who come around, I don't know, every hour, two hours, or whatever the case may be. It's something that doesn't make sense to me. And now, this is what really gets me here, automatic now, a $2 per hour parking on the street down here? Where's this money supposed to be going? This is what I want to know. Oh, you better believe I'm up on that one. All of a sudden now, $2, I didn't, you know, he want to use it off by saying, oh, there would be increments where a person can have 15-minute installments, parking time. Are we kidding? Who's going to be down just for 15 minutes? Not big old opulent lifestyle of Oklahoma City, not downtown, we're not nowhere. No, it doesn't. And automatically, are we ready for this one too? The man just stated that he's going to have cameras that's going to be able to view parking or when your timeframe is expired or what have you. Did he not say, unless my ears playing tricks on me? Now, he's been pretty good up until this point. Now, and that being the case, you cannot disregard, you people have the power and authority to protect the rights of the citizens who put you in power to not allow somebody to come in on the outside simply because he is an extended arm of the government, to disregard the rights of the people who put you in there to protect their interests and rights as well. We should not have to, an automatic $2 an hour, man, do you know how many people in an hour stay down there longer than an hour? Are you ready for this? A five-hour timeframe, automatic $10? Come on now. Come on now. Automatically would be. And for the most part now, are you ready for this? Some of us who may not have that kind of money or finance at the moment, all of a sudden is going to have to pay tickets and fines, I think it's $15 per extended time period beyond the time. Now, come on, let's be serious with this.
All right.
You know, we have to think about the citizens and not just what these people want.
Michael, we're out of time. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion on item 9C? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9D? More from Jason?
He covered it.
Oh, he covered both of them? Okay. All right. How about a motion then on item 9D? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, Michael, which item would you like to speak on?
Well, let's see, again, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, 5107 North Miller Place. Uh, 5701, I mean, excuse me, 5107 North Miller Place. Okay. Now, the proposal is to what? Destroy it, tear it down, get the owner to act right or make replacements? What's going on there?
Actually, just to secure the property so nobody will get in it and burn it down or?
Okay, so now you just, y'all want to just to secure the property so the one burns it down then, right? You just want to do that? Okay, let's go to the next one since that's the only thing it is.
That's what this whole document is.
Yeah, okay, but now, what I'm saying, are you going to contact owners? Are you just going to do it on your own? Do you have a permit by the city to do so? Have you filed in a court to do so?
Michael, we've already contacted the owners.
Okay, good, well, that's what I needed, no, thank you. Okay, let's go to 2921, Northwest 12. Oh my, now, what you need to secure that one too? Instead, why are we not talking about turning it down? Look like it's dilapidated and abandoned.
It's not dilapidated, it's unsecured.
Okay, and then you have doors, that's windows broken out or what have you? Is anybody living in it?
No.
Okay, wouldn't that not be, and look at that, I mean, would that not be downgrading in the community? No one living in it and broken out windows or whatever? Thought that was the whole point of it?
That's kind of our point.
Okay, let's go to 1216, Southwest 23rd Street. Oh, Lord, now, now, I mean, where is the request to tear it down at? I mean, where's the owner at? Now, you know what, let me tell you something, I don't have a problem with y'all know you people doing the right thing here. And if a person that's not going to come in and act right and you've given them a timeframe and you do it legally, yes, I would say it takes the steps necessary to secure these, this is clearly dilapidated, I mean, oh my God, look like some kind of horror movie. Go ahead on. So you're going to talk about turning it down too, what?
No, securing it.
Why are we not talking about turning it down? I mean, you had other instances in which you're talking about turning them down.
It's borderline, but the inspector feels it can be saved, so we'll give the owner an opportunity to correct it.
Okay. Okay, let me go to the next, okay, 507, Northwest 24th Street. Aka, Akka, or whatever? Oh, now.
That's been stricken.
Yeah, we struck that off, the owner, the owner fixed it.
Okay, stricken. All right, now, next one we got, what's next? Let's go to 2000, Northwest 36th Street, owner abandoned. Uh-oh, owner abandoned. Now, what's the idea on that? Owner abandoned.
Means abated, means the owner fixed it.
Abated, excuse me, abated, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is abated, I'm sorry, I can read better.
Means they fixed it.
Owner abated, it means, okay. Let's go to the next one then, since it's not up. 700 Southeast 47th Street. Rework.
We're notifying the owner.
Okay, I'm going to stop by today and see what it looked like. 238 Southeast 52nd Street? So now, how much is, is it going to cost these people for y'all to secure? I'm sure it is. How much per hour, per day, per month is going to cost to secure it?
It's actually per opening. It's just whatever, if there's two openings, it's a different price, then the whole house would be secured.
Yeah, I know, I'm just asking, you don't have a price set up already for a window or a door or fence around and not closed?
No, there's not a generic price for.
So you just make it up as you go?
No, it depends on the size of the opening like that.
Well, I'll check into that, thank you. All right, go to the next one. 530 Ashes, 71st Street. Now, unsecured, I mean, now, what, now, this is what I'm getting at. Okay, now, I see that there. Now, what interest is it of yours, for the, for the most part, not you, but as a city? What interest of yours is to secure these people's properties and things if they're not having a money attachment to it?
We have to realize somebody's kicked this door in, into this vacant house.
But do you know somebody kicked a door?
Yeah, see the door.
No, 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 that doesn't mean that somebody kicked it in. You weren't there, nor was I. That could have been left open, you don't know if the owner did it, you don't know if he wanted to leave it open?
Well, Michael, the door's open, it's, and there's nobody living in the home, so it's a danger to the community.
Oh, it's a dangerous community because of that. All right, danger. All right, y'all. That being the case, is that, was that the last?
That's the last one.
Okay, I think I'm gone from this point, I'll talk to you later. What's your name again?
All right, is there a motion on 9E? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here that hopes to speak under any item listed under the abandoned buildings list? Michael, would you like to speak on item 9F?
A has been stricken, so the only one's B.
Okay, A's been stricken, so 9F won B.
I would just wait for that one.
Yep.
These are the same properties, these are.
Been abandoned. All right, is there a motion on this item? Cast your votes. And 9F passed unanimously. 9G is to establish a revive policy for the investment of municipal funds that are in the custody of the treasurer. Is Bob coming in?
No, I don't know.
Okay. We'll give him a moment. Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
All right, we're on item 9G.
What you have before you today is our most recent update to our investment policy. We actually review the policy based on the requirements of the policy itself on an annual basis, but we don't always see anything material enough to have to update the document. We have updated this document based on a couple of what I think are key, key items. One of the things that we did want to clarify within the policy is the treasurer's authority as it relates to banking relationships. Charter states that I do have custody of city's funds, but in relation to my responsibilities as it relates in regard to banks and setting up bank accounts and that sort of thing, we wanted to clarify that I also have a responsibility for that. So that's one of the changes within the policy. Probably the key update has to do with we added an option for collateral. You may be aware from some of our past discussions that anytime we keep deposits at any of our banks, those deposits have to be collateralized, meaning something should happen to the bank, the bank goes under overnight, we have to have the ability to do something in order to get our money back. What we've done in the past is that we require the banks to secure our deposits by putting on deposit securities in a form of, you know, treasury notes and other agency notes with the Federal Reserve. So what happens is if the banks should go under, we go directly to the Federal Reserve and say, you know, give us those securities, which we then sell and eventually get our deposits back. One of the things that we're adding is just the ability to, in addition to still being able to take securities for our collateral, we want to add the capability of taking letters of credit from the Federal Home Loan Bank. A letter of credit basically is our bank, as the buyer, will go to the Federal Home Loan Bank, who will be the issuer, and they'll purchase a letter of credit for the city's deposits, to cover the city's deposits. And the city will be listed as beneficiary. So what happens is, in that scenario I explained a minute ago, any event that we would ever have to try to get our funds back, should the bank go under, we just go directly to the Federal Home Loan Bank. And it's actually a better process because the Federal Home Loan Bank letters of credit with securities at the Federal Reserve, there probably is going to be some court intervention. We'd have to justify that those are our securities and that sort of thing. It may take a while to get our money back. With letters of credits, it's actually, we can redeem a letter of credit either that same day or the very next day. Another couple of things about the Federal Home Loan Bank is that they are, they do carry the same credit rating as the federal government, so very well-rated, very well-supported institution. We, any costs that's associated with a letter of credit will be borne by the bank, it's just part of the, part of the rules that have been established by the state treasurer. A couple of other things in regard to why, you know, some of the advantages related to letters of credits, it's appealing to banks. You know, carrying securities for them, especially we require government securities, which, you know, interest return on that has been very small over the recent years. So that's been kind of a drag on them and their balance sheet. So they would much prefer using those securities for something else and using the letter of credit process. It's actually an easier process for them as well. Another good thing for us is that a letter of credit is of fixed value. So if we have a $10 million letter of credit that the bank gives us today, you know, three months from now, it's still going to be worth $10 million. So what that means is that, you know, again, in our scenario with securities, I would have to monitor the value of those securities, which fluctuates based on the market, you know, it could change tomorrow. So we have to make sure that they're always carrying enough securities to cover our deposits. With a letter of credit, we won't necessarily have to do that, take a whole lot less monitoring. So with that being said, we are recommending that letters of credit be added as a form of collateral, and certainly I'd be happy to take any other questions you might have.
All right, questions for Bob?
Bob, do all municipalities do, I mean, is this, you said it's a state requirement?
Right.
Is that nationwide or is it?
It is.
You do the state of Oklahoma?
It is. And actually, some of the cities within the state have used letters of credit in the past. In fact, letters of credits have always been allowed in statutes. We didn't always include them in our investment policy because our investment policy is a bit more restrictive.
But with regard to the general concept of requiring that a bank keep securities or keep collateral for?
It's not a new concept, right.
I've never heard that, I didn't know.
Okay. No, it's, it's used throughout the nation. We looked at it closer recently because there was a restriction in statutes that we could only use the Topeka Bank, Federal Home Loan Bank, for letters of credits. For us, we oftentimes are using national banks, you know, JP Morgan's an example of that. JP Morgan is actually residenced in Columbus, Ohio, so they would have to use a Cincinnati Federal Home Loan Bank. So just recently, and the state's also a customer of JP Morgan as well, they amended the administrative rules to allow us to use other home loan banks other than just Topeka. So that made it more appealing for us.
I'd move the resolution.
All right, we're voting on item 9G. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H is a land issue near the river. I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order. Cast your votes. 9H passed unanimously. Item 9I, understand we do not need executive session? All right, we're voting on 9I. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there a motion here? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Under items from council, I think we have an, is this where the LFR presentation would go?
Um, no, that's under city.
Okay. Items from council then, James? All right, Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to thank folks at Briarwood for Sunday afternoon's ice cream social they had and giving me an opportunity to present the benefits of the geo-bond program that will be voted on in September. And then also, there was a great meeting put together by West 10 Group on Thursday noon with all the apartment managers along Northwest 10th Street, being invited to a lunch at the InTrust Bank, and the police department had a presentation on drugs and giving the apartment owners, operators, some information about what they needed to be looking out for and how they should be handling illegal drugs. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh-huh. Todd? All right. David? Meg?
I guess two quick things. At 4 o'clock today, Mayor, you and I will be.
At four o'clock today, Mayor, you and I will be, hopefully not in the rain, ribbon-cutting for Red Andrews Park.
Yeah, you want groundbreaking is when the ground's soft in the rain, but you don't want ribbon-cutting in the rain.
Not ribbon-cutting. So I would encourage anybody in the neighborhood to come on down. This is one of these, I've said before, but it's a great public-private partnership, and it's going to be a wonderful renovation. And I, like Larry, wanted, I wanted to thank the Plaza District for hosting me to a meeting to talk about the upcoming bond issue and the reasons that's so important.
All right, Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to give an update on the Senior Health and Wellness Center, number one. I talked to Bill Fleming this morning. When this project first started, we had hoped by April 30th to have 600 members, and we hoped by the end of the year to have 2,000 members. Today, we're at over 3,400 members. The water aerobics classes are full. We're having to expand. The art classes are full. The seminars are well-attended. It's, the evening events, such as the barbecue they had a couple of nights ago, over 600 people showed up. And so I asked Bill to tell me, how's it going? And he asked me to relate, this is fantastic, it's great, the people love it, the concept really works. So I want to thank Bill Fleming and all these folks for all the hard work they're doing. And I also want to thank, All About Chai has now opened up in there as of this week, and there's food service, coffee and tea.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Thanks for that report. All right, City Manager Reports, Laura.
So this morning, we have a presentation, I'm sorry, Craig, I think our first presentation is regarding the Otoka Pipeline Raw Water Transmission Line at the Canadian River Crossing. I believe that Don Douglas is here to introduce consultants who will further the presentation. Don hates preempting staff, I'm sure.
Mayor, City Council, thank you all for giving us the time to present and talk a little about Otoka. My name is Don Douglas with Triad Design. With me during the presentation is Kurt Thompson of AECom, which is part of our design team. I'm going to brief agenda, and we'll go through the project history. We're going to do some examples of crossing the river, which is one of the main things we're going to talk about, talk about, consider the alternatives, the cost estimates, and our recommendations. So a little about the project history. This is the Otoka Pipeline, which you all have heard about and will hear about as the coming months begin. It works, basically works taking water out of McGee Creek to Otoka, and then enters a 100-mile pipe, 60-inch concrete pipeline, and through six lift stations, and goes into Draper. The new proposal will be a 72-inch steel line, again, from Lake Otoka to Draper and be the 100 miles. Now, when our forefathers began to think of this job and built the first line, they left us enough right-of-way because they knew eventually that we would need another line, and that's what we're going to talk about. This really starts in the Maryland Remember 1950, that Oklahoma City was suffering a drought similar to what we're having now. Both Lake Overholser and Hefner were down, and the council began to look at a short-term, long-term solution. The short term was to dig and build wells into the North Canadian Louvium to provide water into Hefner and Overholser. The long term was to go to southeast Oklahoma. So in 1955, we had a bond issue, and there were 12 propositions on the bond issue, one of which was $5 million to go to Otoka, buy the land and build the dam in the reservoir. When the bond issue was voted, four of the five, four of the 12 passed, and Otoka was one of them. So in 1958, the reservoir and the dam were completed. In 1959, we began to hold more water in that reservoir than we did in both Lake Overholser and Lake Hefner. In 1960, being at its first of the year, they formed the Water Trust, and we began to look at how we'd bring the water up. And by the end of 1960, the trust received $62 million to build a line from Otoka to Draper. At that point, the council increased the water rates 50%. So in August of 61, we laid the first joint of pipe, and in December of 61, we began construction of the lift stations. In 1962, and you'll watch the time lapse because this is going to be similar to what we're going to go through. In 1962, we laid the last joint of pipe to connect the pipelines, and in August of 63, Draper begins, began to get its first water from Otoka. In April of 64, southeastern Oklahoma City water entered into the distribution system. Now, for that $62 million, and it ended up being 67 by the time they got through it, we got two reservoirs in the land, six pump stations in the land, 100 miles of 60-inch pipeline, and one 30-million-gallon treatment plant. And that was the beginning of our system from Otoka. And so now Kurt's going to take us through the next part of the presentation, which is how we're going to get under the river and the options that we have to do.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, so I'm going to discuss a bit about the engineering analyses. We, we only threw about six months of analyses and cost estimating to come to the conclusions we have. And I'm going to give you some examples of what our analyses were like and why we concluded with the conclusions that we did. The existing bridge, in case you haven't been out there, for crossing the Canadian River is a pipe bridge, where it relies on the strength of the pipe to support itself across the river. The decision to build this type of bridge was made back in the 60s, and the purpose of our report and our analyses was to decide, is that still the best way to cross the river today? So we looked at, in our study, we looked at three different, or two different categories of options. One is to cross the river with a bridge, an aerial crossing, and the other is a trenchless crossing. In the aerial crossings that we looked at, we studied repeating what was done back in the 60s, use a pipe bridge to get across the river. We also looked at a truss-span bridge, which would be a slight improvement on the existing pipe bridge, and we also looked at a complex bridge, three different types of bridges, three different types of aerial crossings to get across the river. We looked at each type. We did conceptual designs of each type of bridge and compared the pros and cons of each type of aerial crossing. A pipe bridge, similar to what's in place now, requires about 22 piers to get across the river. That's because of the limits of the strength of the pipe. A steel truss bridge, where you have an exterior truss supporting the pipe, requires about 13 piers to get across the river. And then a complex bridge, the, the main benefit of that is that you can get across the river with fewer piers. We also looked at the pros and cons of each type, mostly from the point of view of future expansion to add another pipe for the crossing and for operation and maintenance. The existing pipe bridge requires quite a bit of operation and maintenance every year, and as the pipe and the bridge is aging, that requirement for operation and maintenance is getting even greater. And the steel truss bridge and the air, the complex bridge make, improve the access for operation and maintenance of the, of the pipe that's needed every year. Then we looked at trenchless options. This is going below the river, crossing in the, either in, within the riverbed or in the sandstone layer below the riverbed. These are options that weren't necessarily available back in the 60s, or at least aren't as, weren't as prominent back then as they are now. We looked at two types of trenchless crossings. One would be using a tunnel boring machine that is being used quite a bit throughout the United States now, and the other was to do a rock bore, which is similar to the type of tunneling that was done before micro-tunneling machines were in place. For a micro-tunneling or rock boring operation, for either type of trenchless crossing, you need shafts at each end of the crossing for access and egress from the tunnel. And then for each type of those options, trenchless options, we looked at either a shallow bore where we would be boring through the river, riverbed itself, the river alluvium, or a deeper bore where we would be maintaining the bore throughout the sandstone layer underneath the river. Well, this, this slide is to show you a little bit about micro-tunneling operations. They are very engineered operations these days. It's a relatively new method for boring, but all of the operations are now engineered in terms of how to grind the rock, how to remove the rock from the tunnel, how to push the pipe through the tunnel. These are all well-engineered systems. In this case, it'll be relatively simple, to be, to be honest, because we'll be going below a river, but in an urban setting, micro-tunneling has been used to go beneath buildings and other structures. We compared the two options, micro-tunneling machine versus more standard rock bore, looking at the advantages and disadvantages of each. There really are, we are within the limits of either type of operation, but the, as we got into the conceptual design for the rock bore, one of the issues is removing all of that material from the tunnel. For the roughly 2,500-foot length of this tunnel, they would be, you would be removing a lot of material, and you need two-way traffic in a rock bore tunnel. The machine is not removing the spoils of the tunnel. You're actually trucking the materials out. So that meant that you needed, for a rock bore, you needed to have a minimum 120-inch diameter tunnel to move the rock, to remove the rock and then truck it, move your trucks in and out of the tunnel. When we looked at that, we considered that there are no advantages to that larger-sized tunnel. In fact, it's creating more spoils that you have to dispose of. We eliminated the rock bore from consideration after we got through this level of conceptual design and just took the two micro-tunneling options forward.
I see a question right there. On the disadvantages, it says no additional space for future pipe expansion. What's, what's the possibility of needing a third pipe in the future as Oklahoma City grows? And, and what do we do if you can't, if you can't expand?
Well, the, well, that was one of the, the option is, is replace the second pipe. It'll be the outside of the, there'll be room in the middle for a third pipe if we need. The other option is to go in and rehab the old 60-inch concrete pipe, so that it is functional and, which will take us and give us the capacity to do it. So it's being considered that eventually we might have to have a third pipe.
So have there been studies that have looked at population growth over the next 20, 30 years and the potential of bringing Sardis Lake on with additional water and what we're going to need as far as pipe and pump stations are concerned?
Yes, sir. And, and what we'll do now is the pipe comes and then Sardis eventually comes, the second pipe. Sardis water will then come to the booster station, which we're going to call O, which will be a new, in the later system there, so that the system is designed to be able to handle future expansion.
Thank you. And one other thing I'd like to mention, we did have discussions along those lines with the water utility staff. One of the, because we wanted to make the case that that larger diameter tunnel is of value, but especially in water systems, redundancy and reliability of operations are important. And if you try to just use this one large tunnel, if anything happens to that tunnel, now you've got no water getting across the river. So the, what we studied here is to look at two tunnels under the river. One, as part of the 72-inch, the expansion of the existing pipe and eventual replacement. And then when that 60-inch pipe needs to be replaced, you would drill a second tunnel. That gives you more flexibility in your operations and more reliability in your operations. And that, that's a good segue into the alternatives that we considered. For the aerial crossings, we looked at, knowing that in the future there might, you might want two pipes going across the river, we looked at pipe bridges that would be large enough, the piers would be designed up front to allow a second pipe to be installed on the piers, or we looked at building the pipes on separate piers. What, you build one pipe now and then come in and put a second row of piers and a second pipe on it in the future. For the truss-span bridge, one of the advantages of the truss-span bridge is you just put in the same number of piers, but you can expand that in the future to lay the second pipe on the truss itself. That, this, the advantage of this one is that it allows for good access to the pipes for future operations and maintenance. And then when we got into the Cable State Bridge, this would be the complex bridge that allows for a longer span across the river. We started pricing this option, and, and as we got into the design, it is, the word "complex" is appropriate to this. It requires very difficult construction, very expensive construction, and it doesn't offer as many advantages. So we went ahead and priced this option out, but we knew when we got to this stage of the analysis that this was not a likely option. Then for the micro-tunneling options, what we looked at is initially putting in a 72-inch diameter bore. It would actually be an 84-inch diameter bore to accommodate a 72-inch diameter pipe, and then the option of, in the future or concurrently, putting in another smaller tunnel to replace the existing 60-inch pipe. There were a number of discussions of how to fit those tunnels within the existing right-of-way, and as these graphics show, we decided that putting the new tunnel on the north and west side of the existing pipe bridge, and then the second tunnel, the 60-inch diameter tunnel on the other side, allowed us to most efficiently use the existing right-of-way. We also compared some options where we did some tunneling and a bridge, just to make sure we had all of the bases covered. In all, we studied, we initially studied about 15 options. We screened that down to 12, and then we came up with what we think is the best final option. The, there, risk is inherent in all of these studies that we're looking at. This river crossing is critical just because it is so unique. For the aerial options, the risks are inherent throughout the life of the pipe, because you have your, your bridge piers and your installation of the pipe above the riverbed, that makes your construction a little risky, and then you have your future operation and maintenance issues that have to be done within the riverbed in the future. For the trenchless options, there is that construction risk. Anytime that you're doing construction below ground, it's a little bit more risky. But then in the future, for operations and maintenance, your, your risks are much less, much less of an issue, because you don't have to do your operation and maintenance as frequently because the pipe, the, the big difference between these two types of crossings is the aerial crossing is exposed to the environment every day. Sun, wind, rain, snow, ice, everything. When you've gone under the river with a trenchless crossing, your pipe is protected. Mother Nature protects your pipe, and that's the biggest, single biggest advantage, what we see is the reduced risk once the trenchless crossing is constructed.
Have we thought about earthquakes?
The pipe can take earthquakes. It's hard to predict. You can take seismic loading into account. If you have ground rupture, there is, you will lose your pipe, whether it's a tunnel or whether it's the, the bridge, the aerial crossing. If you have ground rupture or actually movement across a joint, there's nothing you can do other than, through your operations, shut the pipe down as soon as possible. But the, in terms of seismic, I'll give you an example. If there's seismic action, those pipe bridges, the, the piers and, and the truss span, they're all swaying with that seismic activity. With, with a trenchless crossing, the pipe is moving with the ground, and it's only if you have a ground rupture where you would have a, a damage to the pipe. So seismic is an issue for both, but we believe the trenchless crossing is actually better protected from seismic action. So we went through a fairly extensive cost estimating process. We contacted contractors. We talked to contractors about how they would construct it. We talked to our own transportation bridge engineers on how this would be constructed. One of the biggest issues for the aerial crossing, of course, is working in the riverbed to construct your piers, to get the pipe in place, whereas with the trenchless, you're working within shafts on either side of the river, and most of your work is protected from the river effects. So, as I mentioned, we did cost- So as I mentioned, we did cost estimating for, I forget exactly how many, about 11 or 12 different options. This is to accommodate both a new 72-inch pipe and to accommodate a future 60-inch pipe to replace the existing 60-inch pipe. We looked at both construction costs and lifecycle costs. The lifecycle costs take into account the operation and maintenance costs because, as I mentioned earlier, a aerial crossing is exposed to the environment and requires a bit more annual operation and maintenance than a trenchless crossing would. And the difference came out to about half of a million dollars between an aerial crossing or a trenchless crossing. But the bottom line is, when you compare all of the costs, we looked at the next lowest cost is what our recommendation is. And that is the microtunnel bore for a 72-inch and a 60-inch pipe. And the cost is $20.8 million if they are constructed at the same time. Because there is a fairly significant cost saving by doing that tunneling all in one construction season as opposed to constructing one and demobilizing, coming back and constructing the second one. The reason that we didn't go with the lowest, that we don't recommend the lowest-cost one is the lowest cost is a shallow bore. That's the shallow bore that I mentioned where you're drilling through the alluvium. And that creates a little bit more risk both during construction and after construction during the operation and maintenance because now the pipe is exposed to a little bit more river scour, being in the alluvium as opposed to being down in the solid sandstone rock. So we, we believe the couple of extra million dollars to get deeper and into the rock is worth it. And that's our recommendation is to go with two bores through the sandstone layer below the riverbed. Our, that's our recommendation. This is, this is still at the conceptual level and our next step, our next action steps are to get some more geotechnical information to confirm some of the design information that we had to start with and to take the design to the next step, to refine the cost estimates, to make sure that nothing in the, the design might have a large impact on those cost estimates and then proceed from there.
Counselman. Mark, you asked about the future in regards to population and that. When we first started the study, it was really looking at a 66-inch pipe. And we went to the 72 to be able to accommodate, begin to accommodate Sardis. And the recommendation here too is if you remember the first slide of the bridge you're going across, that, as we said, was built in the 60s and it's not in very good condition. It's already been repaired once. So the idea is to go in and when we do the bore for the new 72, we will do the bore for the existing 60. Take that big structure out of there, which will save us maintenance, and then we'll hook the 60 up. Keeping in mind that these two, the 72 and the 60-inch operate as a separate system in their own. So now we have redundancy and, and ability to move it. So if there's any other questions, thank you very much.
All right. I had a, I had one question. I thought that when we were going through the advantages and disadvantages, that the, that the pipe bridge was supposed to be cheaper. But then when you got to that last, the pipe bridge was almost double or more than double. Is, is that?
Yeah, it wasn't.
Where am I missing?
It was more expensive. We could go back.
Yeah.
And I, I can't quote to you because they all became a blur after going through 11 different, 11 or 12 different cost estimates.
Yeah, see, it says lower cost there for advantage.
Oh, pipe bridge, that's lower cost. That comparison was relative to the other aerial crossings.
Oh, okay.
It's not lowest cost compared to all of the alternatives.
Okay.
But here we were just comparing one aerial crossing versus another aerial crossing.
Okay.
That's the only question I have. Do we have a large enough easement for a third pipeline if it's ever necessary?
That's a good question. We have 100 feet. And right now theoretically, yes, we do. The problem, and I say theoretically, the problem is, is that over the years, our easement and our pipeline's been out there. We have some encroachments. So we're going to have to deal with that as we do the engineering and the final design. But right now, we do have room for the third pipe.
All right. Well, thank you all for that presentation. We appreciate it. And the council is just accepting that report today?
Correct. It's, it's just provided for information. The city manager thought that it was a, a very interesting idea about the pipeline and, and that you all might want to be familiar with that. So after having seen the presentation made to the Water Trust, he wanted to bring it forward to you all.
Anything else under the city manager?
The next item is a presentation to the city council, as, as you recall.
I, I actually have one more question about, and that, that is all going to be paid for by the Water Trust, right?
The Water Utility, yes.
Water Utility Trust, yeah. So through the fees that, or the, all the rates and everything that, that customers, okay?
Correct.
Just to be clear on that.
The next item is a presentation regarding the city council priority briefing for maintain a strong financial management and encourage robust local economy. As you're familiar with our leading for results process, one of the things that we'd like to do periodically is bring forward information for the city council on our progress meeting your strategic objectives. So this presentation today by Craig Freeman will address the maintain strong financial management. And then we'll hear from Brent Bryant and Mark Cranenberg regarding the encourage a robust local economy.
So I'll take a look at the maintaining strong financial management. You know, as you're aware, that the financial management has been, strong financial management has been a priority of the council for many, many years since we've been doing priorities and setting these priorities. And it's really critical for us to be able to serve our citizens and maintain their confidence. So it's something we want to really keep an eye on. It's something we want to keep a priority for the city. And so there are several factors, several indicators that we have used to measure strong financial management. One of those is maintaining our bond rating. The second one is looking at our general fund reserve levels. And the third one is the percentage of sales tax that makes up our general fund revenue. So it's looking at our reliance on sales tax in our revenue makeup there in the general fund. The AAA bond rating is important to us for many reasons. One of them is that the rating agencies really take a long-term view when they're rating us because they're rating us as we're selling 20-year bonds, for instance, in our general obligation bond program. So they take a long-term view of our financial management and our financial situation and position. And that helps us then using the feedback that we get from them and using that as an indicator. It indicates strong financial health. It also, as we have a higher bond rating, not only does it indicate strong financial health, but it also allows us to have lower borrowing costs, but then allows us to put more money into projects. And it also gives us the ability to be able to support other trusts as they're selling bonds. And if they need that backing or that moral obligation support from the city, then we have that available that we can use. It is a limited resource. We, we can get to a place where we max that out and can't go further with that. But having that ability to be able to do that allows some of our trusts that need that additional support to help get lowering, lower borrowing costs as well. A few of the indicators that I'll look at here are tied in with some of the factors that the rating agencies look at. One of them they look at is our bond, our bond capacity, bonding capacity and how much debt we have outstanding. And so they look, one of the measures that we look at is our outstanding general obligation bond debt compared to our net assessed value. And we use net assessed value when we measure this because that's really the basis from which our property taxes are collected then to repay the bonds. You can see that it stayed relatively constant. It did increase in the last few years, got up to about 13 and a half percent, and it stayed there. One of the reasons for that increase is because we've had lower borrowing, more favorable bond markets. We've had lower borrowing costs, which it allow, has allowed us to issue more debt recently. We don't expect that to be an increase over time, especially because of the fact that we have the commitment that we work to stay at the average of 16 mils. And we've been able to successfully do that with our 2007 bond program and intend with the commitment that, that has been made in the resolutions from the council for the 2017 bond program as well. So that should stay relatively constant, but it's something that's important as we look at our bond ratings. Another area that we look at is the funding status of our pension system. This one just emphasizes the Oklahoma City Employee Retirement System. You can see it's 105%. Several years ago, as a result of coming through the recession, our rating had dropped down, our funded status had dropped down to about 87% and had really been declining over multiple years. And the Retirement System Board came back with a recommendation to make some plan design changes that the council approved to put us in a stronger position. And we have had some years, better years of returns also that have helped to bolster that backup, and it's currently at 105%. These are just a couple of quotes that we took out of the ratings reports that we received from Moody's and Standard and Poor's. The first one indicates how important our, our financial reserves are, particularly with Moody's as they've emphasized that. But Moody's and Standard and Poor's both have emphasized the fact that we're so reliant on sales tax as a revenue source and it's so much more closely tied to changes within the economy that they like to see, or cities that are, that have this reliance, they like to see us have higher levels of reserves. So that's something that's very important. The bottom quote there from Standard and Poor's talks about strong financial management practices that are clearly embedded and, and appear to be likely sustainable for the future. And I think that's something that's really important. It's reflective of our city council and, and the culture that you've created for us and having a conservative approach to the way we manage our finances. And as we've had council members change through the years, that's continued to be a part of the culture that starts with the city council, goes through executive leadership, and is throughout our organization. And it's something I think that they have seen consistently that they see as very important to us going forward. We do still have a negative outlook on our rating. We have a AAA bond rating from both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Standard and Poor's has us at a stable outlook, which says they believe that we're in a position to remain constant. Moody's has us on a negative outlook that says, and a few of the factors are listed here, there are factors that are out there that could put us in a position that we could see a downgrade. So it's something that we have to still monitor. A part of it is they indicate in that top section there is really the challenge that we've had with our economy because of the impact on the oil and gas industry over the last several years, the effect that then it's had on sales tax and on our ability to be able to balance our budget and our reliance on reserves. And so what they want to see, when they look at our reserve levels, and I'll talk about that in a minute, they're looking both at where our reserves are by comparison to the total overall budget, but also how much our reserves have been changing. And so we'll look at that in the next couple of slides. On this slide, we're looking at the budgetary basis fund balance. So this is basically cash basis fund balance compared to the, the amount of the budget. So it's unbudgeted reserves on a budgetary basis as a percentage of our general fund budget. And you can see that our policy was changed several years ago to be between 8 and 15% that we try to maintain. We've been at or above that top level for several years. One of the things that you can see here is in the last year, that it'll, actually we're projecting that it's going to increase a little bit. Our fiscal year is still open, last fiscal year is still open, so it's still changing. We think we'll spend down a little bit of fund balance this year, but much smaller than what we had to last year. Last year, we ended up spending down about $11 million in fund balance. So the comment from Moody's was really, if you continue on a path that we're seeing large amounts of fund balance being used, that shows that you have a structural imbalance within your budget and you're having to rely on those reserves. And they don't want to see that continuing. And so being able to shore that up and only use a small amount this year is a very good indicator. And it leaves us with our lower level of budget this year. We've talked about that when the budget was presented, that our budget for this year, our general fund budget is comparable to the FY14 budget. So as the budget decreased, even though our fund balance is a little bit lower, our percentage still stays up at that, about 15%. On the next slide here, this looks at the one indicator we're talking about before with the sales tax as a percentage of the general fund budget or what percentage our sales tax is of our revenues. And again, being a volatile source, it's one we want to monitor closely. It stayed relatively constant. Really what we want to do is monitor, make sure that we're not allowing other fees and sources of revenue to fall behind the cost of those services. And so it's just something that we monitor. We can't always control where this is, but we continue to monitor that as one of those indicators that the rating agencies observe. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
How realistic is it to see, if we could go back to that previous slide as far as percentage of sales tax to total general fund budget? How realistic is it to, to anticipate that percentage changing significantly, more than, say, one percentage point?
It's, it's generally not. I mean, usually it's a change based on, I mean, we try to keep our other fees in line with the cost of services. But it's really, a lot of times, it's the performance of the sales tax. Something that would be significant enough to change would be we get a new revenue source, like we have access to, if we were able to get access to property tax for operations or something like that, it would bring in another revenue source. But otherwise, you're right.
Okay. Well, point is, I don't think there's any projections of significant population growth until we see a more robust economic activity in, in the city area. So looking at other potential sources of revenue, you know, again, we've talked in terms of, of looking towards internet sales as far as a possible new source of revenue. I just think it's time that we try to elevate our efforts to encourage Congress to look or assist us with that type of a solution. And instead of just, you know, mildly asking for their support, especially our own delegation, maybe it's time we become a little bit stronger in that request for assistance. I mean, it's a policy question that the council has to address, but I think our, our previous efforts of just asking just isn't.
And I think cities throughout the country share our concern with that.
I, I would agree with that. I'm disappointed that members of our own delegation are reluctant to support that You know, anyway. Thank you.
All right. Other comments or questions for Craig? All right, Craig, thanks.
This morning, I want to discuss the council priority that is to encourage a robust local economy. The priority states that a, a, a strong economy that supports job creation and improves the local tax base is fundamental to our growth. We selected three performance indicators that we'll go over this morning. I'll do the first two and then Mr. Cranenberg will do the, do the last one. First indicator is the number of people employed. For the period of January of 2010 through December of 16, the number of jobs has increased about 68,000 to a total of 639,000. This equals to about 1.7% annual growth. Looking at the last 12 months, though, you can really see the volatility and the seasonality of our, of our labor force here in Oklahoma City as it peaks in the holiday, during the holiday season, and then it declines immediately after. One thing that's good about this one in the last 12 months is we did see an overall year-over-year increase of around 5,000 new jobs. This next graph provides you the average weekly earnings. You can see between 2008 through 2016, it has had its, it's been a steady increase. It has had some declines. And, but if you look at the next period, for the last 12 months, from April of 16 through April of 17, it's, it's grown from a little over $741 a week to a little right under $840 a week. That's around a 12.6% increase over that time period. The way that we impact this is through one of them, the key one is our strategic investment program, also known as the SIP. And it's, it helps us support a robust economy through the creation of quality jobs. It was created in 2007 by the city council and it was funded by the 2007 general obligation, general obligation limited tax bonds. It totaled $75 million. The SIP program is performance-based. It is a program that supports and also supports the creation of primary jobs. Now, primary jobs are jobs that provide a good or service that is predominantly done outside of our economy and it brings new money into our economy. Our program has performance requirements. You have to create at least a 50 new jobs or have a minimum salary, a minimum payroll of 1.75 million. And one thing about it is performance-based. We do not provide funding hoping the jobs will come. We provide the funds after people have performed. In some instances, we fund infrastructure to support our projects, but when we do that, we'll have a clawback. But by and large, over 90% of our program is all about performance-based after the jobs have been created. We focus on strategic industries, bioscience. We focus on strategic industries, bioscience, new-to-market aviation, and one of Councilman McAtee's favorites is manufacturing. We also focus on that one, too. This program has varied levels of countabilities that companies are provided, required to provide documentation to support the job and the wages, the capital. In addition to that, on a monthly basis, our Economic Development Trust receives a monthly report that shows the performance of every one of our, every one of our recipients. This table here shows you, we've took, we've taken all of the agreements that we've entered into today and we've broken them into three different categories, those that have been completed, those that are active and those that we're just entering into agreements with. Right now, we have the ability to generate up to 12,000 new jobs with an average annual payroll of over $700 million. Also, and also with a over $900 million investment. And that's all for the $63 million that we've allocated to date. In addition to that, as Craig just alluded to, with our heavy reliance on sales tax, we also, as we try to expand our sales tax base, we also try to look at how can we as a staff, as a city, influence that? And we have a retail policy that this council has approved over 10 years ago. And what we do is, again, it's a performance-based type program. We haven't done very many of them. With the exception of the first one, all of them are formulaic where it's based on the amount of sales tax that a particular retailer will generate. We'll get a percentage of that back. That's always negotiable. There's no standard there. We are limited to utilizing only the 2% portion of the sales tax when we're working with the cities with developers. The sales tax rebates, and we call those sales tax rebate most of the time. In this case, we focus on what are the net new revenues. We like to look at, we only look at projects that are large in scale that have a regional appeal. Because again, our deal, our focus is to expand the sales tax base of the city. And when we have regional draws, we can, as long as we can increase that, I always refer to as increase the size of the pie so we can have, provide the resources so we could impact people's day-to-day, our day-to-day operations. And with that, again, it's regional because one thing that we don't want to do is cannibalize our sales tax. We always want to look at the net new. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you give us some examples where you've done these sales tax rebate programs?
We have entered into agreements with Cabela's, the outlet mall, Von Mar out at Coles Springs Mall. Those are the main ones.
Brett, can we go back to the slides that talked about average weekly wages?
Sure.
Yeah, that one right there. So in Oklahoma City and the surrounding communities, that shows 741 through some point in time in 16. Now, the next slide, can we look at that? So that's from 16 through 17. So that shows that currently we're closer to 840.
Yes.
Would you please locate information on that same item for our peer cities and share with us?
We'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, and is Tulsa included in our peer cities, do you know offhand? If not, can we add Tulsa?
I believe they are.
Yeah. I'd like to see that. And maybe we could go back a few years. That's really the key because at 840, that gets a person up to about $43,000 a year, you know, as far as average compensation. I'd just like to see, and again, we've talked about it, if we could really get our innovation district to be successful, I think that has, you know, great opportunities to bring in some employment opportunities at a pretty good wage base. You know, lab techs, these medical techs, all those that, those types of businesses need start out at, I think, 50,000 plus.
What do you attribute that enormous gain to, 12% in one year? I know the NBA salary.
I really don't have anything that, I really don't have any. We'll do a little more digging on that and get back with you on that.
Okay. It seems extraordinary.
Yeah. Your honor, I would suspect, given the timeframe, that it's a reflection on what's happened to the economy because a lot of people, you know, either directly or indirectly impacted by the oil and gas industry. And, you know, that's my only guess at this point in time because people here in Oklahoma, they'll take much lower-paying jobs just to stay employed versus if they lose their job going unemployed. And I just think it's, it's an indication of the quality of employment that we've suffered over the past two years. We can talk about having good employment rates, but I think a more important key is the quality of employment. And I use the term quality in terms of dollars, you know, how much a person is making. And that's one thing that I've yet to see anybody attempt to measure and report on is, quote, "the quality of employment." It's easy to say our unemployment rate is this or that, but to take it a step further and see, well, what's the quality of employment? Something like this goes a long ways in helping defining that. So, thank you.
Anything else under city manager reports?
I did have two other city manager reports in your pocket.
Oh, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mark?
We're both sorry. Go on up, Mark.
That's all right.
Our highly respected airports director, Mark Krannenberg, will now speak on our employments.
Thank you. Good morning, Mark Krannenberg, airports director. And with me today is Karen Carney. Ms. Carney, of course, does an outstanding job with our public information and marketing program. And as such, she's responsible for our air service development program and that's very closely tied to the number of employment. So a new product, a new project indicator this year is for the council is to track employments at Will Rogers World Airport. And so I thought it would be important also because the word, term "employment" may not be universally understood by the public. So I wanted to find that as in the airport industry and the airline industry, it's a term that basically means it's a revenue boarding passenger. And at the airport and in my budget presentations, you may hear me swap terms interchangeably, employment and boarding passengers. It basically means the same. We track our employments on a monthly basis and we report them on a, I didn't mean to do that. We track our employments on a monthly basis and report them on a fiscal annual basis. And it's a very important number for the airlines. It represents the growth of the airlines in your community and at Oklahoma City, Will Rogers. It also generates revenue for the airports. So from one employed passenger, we have the opportunity to increase our revenue in various airline-related revenue categories. And of course, the number of employments can reflect also the growth in the community. And looking at our, at our employment history, just want to go back a few years. First, we'll close out fiscal year 17, which ended on June 30th, and we were over 1.8 million employments. That's pretty good. We had a very strong second calendar year quarter for 2017, which was much better than last year. So what we see is employments are starting to come back. We did have a retreat in the last few years and I think that's mainly due to the retreat in the energy industry as Brett was talking about. When we look each year at our comprehensive annual financial report and go back 10 years, what we see overall is we average about a 1.5% increase in employment growth each year. That's considering all of the downturns such as 9/11, the financial recession, the high fuel price crisis and high oil prices that were in 2008 and 2009. But overall, we have a constant growth of about 1.5% a year. Now, we are anticipating flat employments going forward. However, we think that will be increased due to the recent announcement with Frontier So there are several things that the airport can do to promote employment growth. We have a very assertive air service development program. I mentioned all the work that Karen does in that program. We also have an air service consultant that we have had on contract for many, many years that helps us. We also prepare and plan for growth at the airport, so we're always leaning forward. And we also promote development of airport property and we add new technologies. With regard to air service development, we have conversations with airlines throughout the year. And when we're really looking at a specific market that looks very strong, we've on occasion gone to their airline headquarters and had a targeted presentation with the headquarters' staff at their airline. And there are a couple of air service conferences that occur throughout the year where Karen will go with some staff occasionally and our consultant. And we may meet with eight to 12 different airlines and do many presentations about 20 to 30 minutes long. And we talk about how the airport is structured, our cost structure, which is affordable to the airlines, and it also emphasizes what's going on in the community because the airlines really want to know that. They only have a certain amount of people on their staff to look at all the cities and airports throughout the country. We see it as our job to make sure that they have all the information they have on Oklahoma City so we can put it directly in their face that we're the best choice that they have to take their resources to operate service. We also work very hard to keep our costs low to the carriers. You've heard me in our budget presentations over the last few years, we have an LFR measure to keep our cost per employed passenger, which is another airline airport industry term, to no more than 5% a year. And we've done that every year for the last seven or eight years. So we're known by the airlines as a low-cost operating airport from their perspective. And we have for many years had marketing and operational incentives for new service and desired service. This is an example, the most recent example of our route map. You've seen this before, also in my budget presentations. And now we have 23 non-stops and I highlight the new markets that will be coming soon with the Frontier announcement. We have Orlando, which will be starting November the 1st. They will also be flying to Denver, which is Frontier's headquarters. We already have service to Denver, but that's even more choices for our passengers. And then we anticipate with Frontier's announcement that they will be starting San Diego sometime in spring of 2018. When we talk about recent accomplishments, and I'm going to go back about three or four years, this is a very good example of the ways that we can enhance air service or employments at Will Rogers. So you can have it with either a new airline coming to the market, such as we had with Alaska. Allegiant has come in several years ago and also now Frontier is coming back to Oklahoma City. We also have new markets that can be created. So you see Seattle, Los Angeles. Orlando Sanford has been operated by Allegiant on a seasonal basis for some time now. They recently started flying to Destin Fort Walton Beach area. Frontier again, beginning Orlando on November the 1st and I mentioned San Diego next spring. A couple of other ways that enhancements to our employments can occur, larger aircraft can come into the market. So United, for example, has gone from a 50 to a 76-seater aircraft on their Newark route. What that does is that created the opportunity for two-class service, in other words, first-class service. American Airlines has now taken a lot of their smart, smaller regional jets and they've gone to the larger mainline aircraft. And then Southwest Airlines is now adding more frequencies or times per day that they fly to Dallas Love and Denver. We also have some impacts to air service and I would say some of these can be negative, but they are not necessarily a black eye on the airport or the community. They have to do with the strategies that the airline is employing at the time. It can deal with aircraft mergers, or excuse me, airline mergers and aircraft utilization. Some of the examples here that I have is Southwest Airlines and the service that they discontinued to Atlanta. When Southwest Airlines merged with Airtran, Airtran was deeply rooted in Atlanta and was a fierce competitor with Delta. However, Delta reacted in a big way to that announcement and of course, Southwest eventually pulled out of Atlanta, not just in Oklahoma City, but with other airports as well. And then we're seeing more and more seasonal adjustments by airlines. So United, which was going on a year-round basis to Newark, is now on a seasonal basis. And Southwest Airlines now, because of the route map that they have expanded in Oklahoma City, now they're starting just more seasonal basis to Chicago Midway. So it's all really about the airlines and how their operational models affect airports. And we, it's always a moving target and we're always having conversations about that.
Mark, with Southwest, with United going seasonal at Newark, does that negatively impact thoughts about maybe getting LaGuardia?
No, that's still one of our top airports and I have that as one of our targeted airports on another slide. But no, we're very much talking not just to United, but other carriers as well about And in fact, here we are. So some of our ongoing efforts, this are some of our top markets that we've been recruiting for some years. As you know, we've been sponsored a couple of times by air carriers trying to go to Ronald Reagan Washington National Airport. It's a very tough airport to break into because it's a slot airport, as well as New York's LaGuardia Airport. We're also focusing our efforts on Miami or Southern Florida area. And we're looking very much at Philadelphia. Philadelphia is very important because if you go to Philadelphia, there are lots and lots of flights that just connect up into all those cities into the Northeast. A couple of airlines also that we're working with and having meetings with regularly are Spirit Airlines and JetBlue. I will tell you with all the airline mergers over the years, that it is a shrinking number of airlines that are available now for us to talk to these days. Also planning for growth, I mentioned, is one way that we can increase our employment activity. And a couple of ways are we doing that with our terminal expansion and also some runway and taxiway improvements. Just to recap, on the terminal expansion, we're reviewing the 65% plans and our latest estimate from the consultants. Our goals here are to consolidate and streamline our security checkpoint, add four new additional gates and start the first phase of a east concourse, which will eventually have nine gates. We're taking our existing checkpoints, turning those into the larger meter-grader lounges and adding a lot more public circulation space and overall improving the passenger Runway and taxiway improvements can also facilitate development. We can handle just about any commercial aircraft now in the inventory at Will Rogers. We have a lot of runways and taxiways and great capacity moving forward into the future. When we have these improvements, it enables further development. A couple of good examples, we changed the Taxiway Hotel, which is the north-south taxiway, which is on the far east side of Will Rogers. We changed that from asphalt to concrete, made it more weight-bearing for larger aircraft to facilitate more development on the east side, development of the airport and Lariat Landing. Another one that we just got a grant on, and a couple of weeks ago you approved this grant, was to extend Taxiway Golf or Taxiway G. We will be extending that Taxiway East-West across the Old Portland into Lariat Landing, which will create a lot of larger parcels available for aeronautical development that will have access to the runways and taxiways. We've had a lot of requests over the last couple of years with 30, 40, 50-acre parcels. We don't have that today and so we're creating that. And just adding and improving our taxiways through the FAA's design standards just eliminates traffic congestion and potential delays. When you promote airport property, we do that all the time. This encourages business growth in air service. We know that the 20-year business growth and population growth in Oklahoma City is just going to have more demands on air service. Having all of these extra opportunities creates jobs, which expands the sales tax for the city, which is good. And we're very excited because employment growth also can help in attracting conventions and tourism. And, you know, we're very excited about the new convention center and we hope a byproduct of that will be more non-stop destinations coming to Oklahoma City. We also add some new technologies and these are enhancements that make the passenger experience better. Our new checked baggage inspection system is a more streamlined baggage system to check bags for those bags that are checked at the ticket counters. It's also better tracking of bags and makes it easier to inspect these bags with Transportation Security Administration. And then we have our parking access and revenue control system, of which we're on the, probably about a third of the way on the implementation stage of that. about a third of the way on the implementation stage of that, and that will give us some space-by-space counts or level-by-level counts in garages and some other customer amenities, such as paying on foot kiosks. That's all I have for you this morning. Be happy to answer any questions, and Karen is available as well.
All right. Questions?
One thing I'd say, the last four or five years of my work has taken me to the east coast quite a bit, and when I return home, I'm always so proud of our airport. It's beautiful, it's clean, the people are really friendly, and so I just want to compliment you and your staff for what I believe to be one of the best airports in the United States.
Thank you. We hear that often, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
All right. Mark, thanks. That concludes City Manager Reports.
I have two other City Manager Reports I just want to mention. There are no presentations for them today. First is the hotel motel tax. This is the end-of-the-year report, and it does reflect numbers unaudited, but through June thirtieth, and the hotel motel tax was down three point three percent below the prior year, but only one percent below our projections, and it was good in the fourth quarter, so hopefully that's a good sign going forward, up about three percent in the fourth quarter, so looking forward to that. The last thing I wanted to mention was the report that's in your packet regarding the federal HUD funding allocations. You know, every year, this is a legislative priority for us at the federal level to maintain our CDBG funding especially, and I just wanted to report to the council that our funding from HUD is actually up a little bit this year, not materially, but up a little bit. Our home program is down just a little bit, again, not materially, but overall, our HUD funding is holding its own, so I just wanted to report on that, and there's more detail on that in your packet.
I think we're actually incredibly lucky.
Very fortunate.
We could have had that cut by a half or more, and those are the dollars that fund so many of the other social programs that we pass through.
Right, very fortunate.
We've been holding our breath, and we were really lucky.
Yeah.
All right. Michael, did you want to talk on City Manager Reports?
Yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead. He has it too.
Again, Mike, Washington 2900, Northeast Eighteenth Street. I just want to make some brief comments here. This strategic investment program, I think it's very discriminatory and is geared toward protecting the interests of the wealthy. Now, according to what this gentleman just stated, you know, you have to have a budget of about, personal budget that is, about one million and plus. Now, again, not everybody, especially in the blighted community where I come from, there are various businesses that would more than likely like to employ people who around them to, as we know, with their employment will come, an increase in government spending, it also increase in uplifting our community, more people will be off the streets, in which we see a lot of them doing. Now, again, number one, for the most part, I believe this SIP program, again, I have to go back and read it, SIP, Strategic Investment Program, it should not be discriminatory in design for those who have money already. What that does is say, we're going to exclude the little people because you don't have a million dollars and you don't have, quote-unquote, fifty people to put to work. Now, if you start off small, I'm told that you start off small, you grow large. Why? Because a lot of people, when you put them to, in an employment, this gives them an opportunity to reach that fifty-member or employee plateau, and in reaching that plateau, then that means that a brother's going to tell his sister, sister's going to tell her friend, and then Johnny's going to tell his friend. But for the most part, when you adopt, and again, the man just stated in two thousand and seven that this council adopted this resolution or an agreement to incorporate this strategic investment program into practice, again, that is a blatant disregard for those people who don't have money. Again, he just said, the program is designed for people who have million and more plus. That's not for council. You have people today, right now, if we were to be giving some of that money, that this SIP program is designed for the wealthy only, I guarantee you that our blighted areas at which I live in, especially Northeast Twenty-third Street and Martin Luther King, and go heading east and west on the main street, a lot of these businesses that are small could use some of this money that's given toward the wealthy. Now, how can we sit here and consciously accept the fact that we are giving this money to only people who have a million dollars or more, who could put fifty people to work? Do you know how many people on the northeast side that can't put fifty people to work because they're not that large? But did you know that the ten or fifteen people that they can get off the street is in turn possibly a great investment for our community? Otherwise, we don't get anything. Especially this tax and command finance program, which is going to the wealthy people, again, still in our community, once again, the Thirty-Sixth Street Shopping Mall, the completed Sixth Street Stonewall apartment buildings, that's not for us, that's for the already opulent people who, again, use their investments to build, and in turn, the taxpayers' dollars from our money is going to build them up, you see, and then now my community can decrease it more and more and more. Why? Because I'm not giving any of the money staying to where I'm buying from. All the money in my stores, the restaurants and everything is going, what, to the people don't live with me, but when I go to that place and buy a hamburger, it's not staying here, it's going back to where that bank account is, that person who live outside.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to say, we need to try and consider that.
Ronnie Kirk?
My name is Ronnie Kirk, from twenty-three, twenty-eight, North Missouri, Missouri, Ward Seven. First of all, I'd say, Michael is not with me, I bought my own assistant. I'd like to say, in the last several months, death come to my house three times. Came to my front door twice after me. Went through my back door one time and took my wife. I'd like to say thanks to Baptist Hospital and Dr. Doug Hoffman for the new technology that gives me at least seven or ten years more of life with this new LVAC system that they give me. Young lady, pass those copies off of me. I have copies going to Baptist Hospital, the Black Hall of Fame, Larry Jones Foundation, Oklahoma City Police Department, eleven forty radio station, and Mr. Pete Pickett. The letters on the front of these documents is twenty-five years old when I came to Ron Noah asking for a certain area of the String Pearl Park to be reopened. Now, I know why Jesus wept on the cross. He wept on the cross because he was not in pain, he could control pain. He wept on the cross because it was so hard for the people in power to get the low-income people freedom. All we want is to enjoy the growth of Oklahoma City. In war, it's acceptable to lose ten percent of people to take a hill, but we not in war. All we want is to enjoy part of what was called String Pearl Park, where we've been going for twenty years. All we ask is to take the low-income people in this state into the future and the growth of Oklahoma City. In twenty-five years, we went to Twenty-third and Sooner Road, where it had a recreation sign on the entryway down on the river. We took kids down there for twenty-five years. It was, in twenty-five years, all the city had to clean up that park was one time in twenty-five years, and that was because some college kids came down two years ago on the Fourth of July. They bought wooden pallets to the river, had them all stacked up. So I sent my security down and asked them, he asked them, "Don't light that fire, do not light that fire." And so those kids, college kids, they waited till they were leaving out at quarter to eleven, and they set that fire. The fire, it burned all night, so we stayed down there to make sure nothing burnt. The fire department came down and the fire was going down.
Ronnie, you're going to need to wrap it up.
Yes, sir.
I know you're in the middle of a story, but see if you can.
So all we want is, what we ask for in those letters, that we want to reopen this area where the signs are still up today, call it a recreation area for String Pearl Park, which seven, it says it's stretched for twenty-two miles, but they only developed seven point five miles over. We just want to go down and put our feet in this river, just want to take the little gate down where we can continue going.
All right. Thanks, Ronnie.
Thank you. And I'll probably return next week just to see what we can do.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Two weeks, Ronnie, we won't be here next week.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Is, Michael, you're up.
Yeah, in Twenty-nine hundred Northeast Eighteenth Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Again, I'm glad to know that I'm not here with that gentleman. I guess he got his brownie points. Now then, I want to talk about the many hats that Kathy O'Connor wears here, down here, since this is my three minutes, I guess, to, since it's be heard, and I want to talk about Kathy O'Connor's unwavering involvement in the economic development of the Oklahoma City downtown area. Now, it seems to me that this council is very much aware, especially as pointing her as the new head of the Economic Development Trust, actually, the, one of the members. I want to go through a little bit of history on this woman and show how possibly, is it possible for this woman to wear so many hats in government areas? In other words, occupying jobs, manipulating jobs that everyone else could possibly want themselves. Now, let's take, for example, she's a former Assistant City Manager, number one. Then she's also the Executive Director of Urban Renewal Authority. She's now also the General Manager for the Industrial and Cultural Facilities Trust, Serregate General Manager for the Economic Development Trust. Now, let's think about all these trust and things that this lady's involved in. How in the world can one woman be here incorporated and taking control of all these business areas and opportunities and excluding other people from being given an opportunity to hold these different positions? And it's no question in my mind that this lady having all of these positions like this here is totally unfair, unreal.
We've lost quorum, I'm sorry, the meeting is over.
Oh, yeah. What about my three, I don't, we lost, oh, so let me go back, I think it's time for some lawsuits here.